Can't hear you.
Speak up a little bit.
Okay, alright. Meeting login details, can you hear me now? Hello?
Yeah, yeah, you're still, you're still low.
What do we put that plug in the center?
Oh, you're plugged in there. Andy, give it a whirl again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Meeting login details may be found in www.cityofalpine.com for the purpose of considering your test agenda. The notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.443, Texas Department Code. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after determination of a form and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meeting comments and question rules and procedures are listed on the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please email your name to geo.gallitoni@ci.alpine.us. If you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand. All names wanting to make public comments for the meeting will be cued upon and given to the mayor at the section of the meeting. The mayor will be calling those individuals one at a time at our meeting. And our meeting moderator will take you off mute to make your comments. This will function the same as our existing sign-up sheet in council chambers. Please note, you must include your full name first and last, along with what or you reside in or have business interest in. If you do not live or own property in the city, please state that in your email. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic or continue discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff members will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call upon the board to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. For this meeting to order, please stand for the presence.
To the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
City Secretary, do we have a forum?
Uh, Mayor, we do have a forum and news posted on 5:00 PM on November 3rd.
Okay, Lucy Escobedo will not be in this evening. She had a death in the family and I do the sympathy from the mayor and from city council. So, we'll go ahead and proceed to public comments. Anybody for public comments? Yes, sir, please.
Can you hear me? My name is Carl Flay. I'm a ward five. And I understand we have two new council members coming on. And you want to do like you. We also, I understand, going to discuss the charter a little bit. And I'm glad to hear that because I would recommend that the two new council members read that very closely because there's some very, very important information that needs to be understood. And those of you who have heard it recently, please read it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Secretary, can you give a copy of the charter to the new members, please? When you have it, okay? And item number four, city manager.
Yeah, item number four is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on pending ordinance 2020-11-03 for the canvass of the votes for the November 3rd, 2020, City of Alpine general election for mayor or council member Ward Two and one council member Ward Four. All three items, all three terms run through the May election.
I'd like to call a point of order before we start the candidacy. And I did some research and I think city manager and I had a little bit of a discussion on this. So I'm going to root this verbatim so there's no questions about it. Okay? First question presented, can an Alpine employee run for city council resign safely before the election and becomes council member following the election? There's two separate and distinct issues raised. Eligibility to run for office and eligibility to be sworn into office. Alpine is a home rule city and its home rule charter set forth the eligibility requirements to hold office. These requirements include the qualification that a city council member not hold any office, other office or employment under the city. This applies to holding the office after being sworn in. But this is not the end of the discussion. Texas state law, not the home rule charter, sets forth the qualifications to run for office. The general eligibility requirements to run for any public office in the state are described in Texas Constitution Code 145.001, which includes a provision to satisfy any other eligibility requirements prescribed by the law for the office. 145.001 at seven, Alpine's charter. The local law describing such other candidacy requirements to run for Alpine City Council states that a candidate must not hold any other office or employment under the city. Alpine Home Rule Charter 3.02 Qualifications. To make this clear, to be a lawful candidate for office, one must also possess all the qualifications to hold the office. One cannot wait until the last day before being sworn in to suddenly possess all the required qualifications. Therefore, a candidate for Alpine City Council cannot cannot also be a city employee in the present situation. Chris Rodriguez, a city council candidate, was an Alpine employee through October 3rd, 2020. During the same period, Chris Rodriguez is also a candidate for city council. Despite resigning from this before the election, Ms. Rodriguez, being a city employee during her candidacy, was in violation of the charter. Therefore failed to meet local eligibility requirements of the election code 145.001. At seven, Ms. Rodriguez was therefore eligible to run for city council seat while serving as a city employee. Ineligible, I'm sorry. Ms. Rodriguez became statutory ineligible to be a candidate the moment she became a city employee. A home rule city right to enact further legal qualifications for local office candidacy as well set in law in Willis versus City of Fort Worth, 380SW.2D814, Texas Civic Application, Fort Worth, 1964, Nov. 11. A home rule city charter provisions prohibiting a city council from running for other office while holding a council seat was held constitutionally both federal and under the state constitution. When the Fort Worth City Council announced he was running for the senate, the council was allowed to disqualify and remove the councilman as he had failed to meet the local charter eligibility qualification for office. Ultimately, resigning before the election date or taking a seat in the city council does not absolve the further use of her ineligibility. But ineligible requirements must be met during the campaign. For instance, Charter 3.02 Qualifications. Section also states that a council member must be a resident of their council district and the city. If the non-resident ran for an Alpine City Council seat and then moved to Alpine days before winning the election in order to meet the residency requirements, that individual will clearly be ineligible and barred from taking office. The Charter 3.02 Qualifications requirements therefore apply to individuals due to campaign itself. Texas Black Ship Code, Section 145.001, at seven, not just on the election day. As such, Ms. Rodriguez was not qualified candidate under the charter. And the election code 145.001, at seven, bars Ms. Rodriguez bars her from taking office due to her failure to meet the additional eligibility requirements prescribed by local law. Second question presented. As Ms. Rodriguez was not formally disqualified from a candidacy during the election, she should have been. What is the proper remedy now? Texas Election Code 145.003 describes the eligible process to dictate and remove ineligible candidates like Ms. Rodriguez. She was not declared ineligible before the election. Ms. Rodriguez pursuant to 145.003D now must be declared ineligible through the use of public records documenting the reason for ineligible by the presiding officer of the final candidacy authority. After she polled, after the polls closed on election day and before a certain certificate of election issued, an Alpine City Council is a final candidacy authority. The mayor is a presiding officer and the certificate of election is to be issued during the November 17th, 2020 Alpine Council meeting. As such, Mayor Ramos has a duty and sole authority to declare Ms. Rodriguez ineligible and must do so before the certificate of, the certifications, sorry, of election is issued at this council meeting in Ms. Rodriguez's favor to meet the required qualifications for office. Case law enshrines, quote, "The mayor's duty to declare an unqualified candidate ineligible for office." And the fact that ineligible candidate is ineligible to hold office. The court held in status 508SW.3D500, Texas, et al., 2016, no petition, that Eligible Code 145.003 places a duty of appropriate authority in properly in properly reviewing the information permanent to a candidate ineligible. If the authority determines that the record established ineligible the authority shall declare the candidate ineligible. This statutory obligation to declare a candidate ineligible is a duty imposed by law. Journal citation of merit emphasis add. Quite simply, Mayor Ramos cannot allow Ms. Rodriguez to be seated at the city council under the circumstances of her ineligible candidacy. And the mayor's duty under 145.003 to declare such an ineligible candidate ineligible to take office. What it says is she was a candidate while she was a city employee. And she should have been disqualified at that point. Okay? I'll go ahead and continue. Election Code 141.001, eligibility requirements for public office to be eligible to be a candidate for or elected or appointed to a public office in the state. A person must be a U.S. citizen, be 18 years of age or older on the first the first day of the term to be filled on the election or the date of appointment applicable or have been determined by final judgment of court exercising probate jurisdiction to be code mandating incapacitated or partially mandating incapacitated without the right to vote. Having been finally convicted or felony, this person has not been barred nor otherwise from the resulting disabilities. Having decided continuously in the state parole bonds and the territory for which the office is declared for six months immediately preceding the date, the following date, for candidates whose name appeared on a general primary election ballot the date of regular filing the times for candidates' application for place on the ballot. For an independent candidate, the date of the regular filing deadline for candidate application for placing ballot. For arriving candidate, the date of the election which candidate's name is written in. The bottom line is you cannot, and I know what the charter said and it would be explained to me, but this went further into detail that she should have been declared ineligible or she should have resigned her position from the city to run for the particular position. So therefore, I have to declare her ineligible.
You do not have the authority, Mayor, to support the vote.
Sir?
You do not have the authority to make that declaration.
I am the one that started it.
No, you do not. The city council is the one. According to charter, we determine that based upon city charter. And you decide to attest to that. You have no vote, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I am saying that she is ineligible. Okay?
That's an interesting thought.
Okay, and I will stick to that. I just want, I just want the process to work correctly.
So, it's time for a motion. I hereby move that we take action for 2020-11-01 for the canvas of the votes for the City of Alpine general election for mayor for the councilman Ward Two, and the councilman Ward Four.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, who said Maria?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Rick, Kelly, Betty, who else?
Maria, Ray, myself, I cannot say who.
Okay. Ramon, are you voting?
I'm having problems with my computer. What are we voting on?
Ramon, we're voting on the first ordinance, which is for canvassing to approve the canvas of the votes for November 3rd for ordinance 2020-11-03 for the mayor, councilman Ward Two, councilman Ward Four.
Okay, let's take the vote again. So I'll know who's voting. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Rick? Betty? Maria?
That's Ramon.
And Ramon?
Ramon.
Okay, so we have four. So the motion carries. Thank you, sir. Okay, let's go ahead and continue then.
Item number five is swearing in of the mayor, councilmember Ward Two, and councilmember Ward Four by the honorable Judge.
Good evening. Hang on one second. I know we've got a pooch making an appearance here. All right. Am I correct in understanding that by vote of the council, the canvas was just approved? Is that right?
Correct.
I think it needs to be made clear that I am here solely as a magistrate. I have no involvement and I'm not making or giving any implicit or explicit opinion about the transaction that I just witnessed here on the record at the council meeting. So all I'm here to do as a magistrate is swear in based on the canvas that I have just received at y'all's direction. So let's first have Mr. Mayor. I think we ought to do you first. Don't you get where I can see you here?
Can you see me?
Not yet. Now I can see.
How about now?
I see you. Can you see me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Camera's getting situated there. All right, sir. Raise your right hand and hold it up. Repeat after me. I, Andres Ramos.
I, Andres Ramos.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of mayor of City of Alpine.
Of mayor of the City of Alpine.
And, I'm sorry, of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Judge.
If you will sign that oath of office, they will transmit that to me for my signature and attestation as well.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
All right. All right, let's move on to Chris Rodriguez, please. If you will come in front of the camera. Thank you very much. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Chris Rodriguez. I need you to speak a little louder. I can't hear you.
I, Chris Rodriguez.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of city council member Ward Two.
Of the office of city council member Ward Two.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right, once she has signed the oath, if you will send that one to me, let's move on to Mr. Sandate. Good evening, Mr. Sandate. Would you raise your right hand and hold it up where I can see it? Please repeat after me. Sir, I, Martin Sandate.
I, Martin Sandate.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of city council member Ward Four.
Of city council member Ward Four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, everyone, for the great honor of helping constitute your council once again.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge. Okay, so I want to welcome our two new council members. We're going to present some recognitions and it'll be to Ramon Olivas for his four years, two terms in office as council member of Ward Two. Alpine City Council Certificate of Honor and Recognition presented to Ramon Olivas. Whereas Ramon Olivas has made significant efforts to improve the City of Alpine's community in Ward Two through his four years in service. Awarded on the 17th day of November 17th in the year 2020. And that's Ramos, City of Alpine Mayor. Thank you very much for your service, Ramon. It's greatly appreciated and you'll be sorely missed in your community. And you did a great job on the council.
I understand, Ramon, thanks very much as well. And while the mayor just said you're going to be missing in your community, no, you're still in your community. We're just not going to see you necessarily here on the council bench. No, thanks very much for your service.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject just for a second, I'd like to thank you for the recognition and also the honor of being able to serve with you and fellow council members on the city council. And congrats and the best wishes to the new city council members.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, we'll move on to council member Escobedo. Alpine City Council Certificate of Honor and Recognition presented to Lucy Escobedo. Whereas Lucy Escobedo has made a significant effort to improve the City of Alpine communities in Ward Four through her two years of service. Awarded on the 17th day, November 17th, in the year 2020. Andres Ramos, City of Mayor, Alpine. And Lucy cannot be in today. She had a death in the family, so our deepest condolences to her and her family. She did an outstanding job here. She was a great asset in the community. And she'll be sorely missed, but she'll be active. She'll be an activist in the City of Alpine. So again, our sincere condolences to Mrs. Escobedo and her family. Okay, we'll move on to reports. I don't have a report. City Attorney Report.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Now you don't have a report, but one of the things we've been waiting for is fulfillment of your obligation to nominate the municipal court judge. Can you share with the council what your plan is?
Yes, sir. I've got one and she'll be present in the December meeting. I talked to her actually Sunday. And she will be more than happy to serve. So.
Can you share with us?
Yes, her name is Jody Cole. And she is from Austin. She is a licensed attorney. And she has set up a practice on Murphy Street at the old new oil warehouse where her husband's building an office for her. She's a great lady. I talked to her at length. And she's ready to serve the community and have her input. And she's very positive. What her vision for the city is and how to operate her court. Okay? So she will be here either on Zoom or present for the December meeting. Okay? Okay, let's go to the City Attorney Report then.
Let's see, we have Union Pacific Railroad and with that, they've filed a motion to try to get the case dismissed from the pleadings. And we are resisting that. We filed some documents noting how they frequently park where we want them to park and how it's no burden on them to comply with the law because they do it voluntarily now, perhaps half or more of the time. And so it's still early in the case and we're waiting for the judge to issue a scheduling order in the case. We'll go forward from there. I think the non-legal side of it is probably having discussions with Eric. He might be able to give y'all an update himself. Anything to add from your side, Eric?
Yeah, I actually have it scheduled for executive session.
Okay. The next thing on the update is municipal court. In September, y'all had a report that indicated that I had dismissed 79 cases that looked as if I was dismissing most of the cases that came before me as municipal prosecutor in municipal court. And total of 79 cases seems like a large number. But I prepared this document for y'all that I shared with y'all. It shows that out of those 79 dismissals, there were really only eight cases that were dismissed without other mitigating circumstances. Majority of those cases were dismissed because there were other cases those persons charged with. We've mentioned this in the past that sometimes people might get two or four or eight tickets for the same or similar offense. And because the people that come to municipal court are generally some of the poorest people in our community, the municipal judge may decide that it's not proper to the municipal judge may decide that it's not proper to try to extract maximum fines from them for every one of those cases. So if that person agrees to fix the problem and pay a fine for one of them, maybe the other seven cases or three cases might be dismissed. Agreement between me, the judge, and the defendant. So the report that I prepared for y'all shows that only eight cases were just dismissed. The rest of them were dismissed because they were convicted in another case, there was insufficient evidence. There was and the complaintant wanted to withdraw the complaint, et cetera, so that in fact, there were valid prosecution reasons for those dismissals. It wasn't that we were not paying attention to the business of municipal court. And the final report is on the Alpine Police Department. And I took the information that I previously shared with y'all and we've tried to make a synopsis of it so it's a little clearer for y'all, so y'all can understand more of what's going on. And what the bottom line is, is that cases that are arrested by the Alpine Police Department and presented to the Brewster County Attorney's Office, which are the Class A, Class B misdemeanors, which are the majority of the arrested cases. I have a disturbing number of cases that are declined for reasons that should be able to be fixed. They, many of them have been declined because of inadequate investigation, unlawful arrests, insufficient evidence, not receiving reports in a timely manner. Things that I think can be remedied and improved. But it shows that from 2017 to 2020, there were seventy-eight Alpine Police Department cases declined by the County Attorney's Office and the reasons are noted in the report. And when I did that, I also compared it to cases that the DPS have here in Alpine and the Sheriff's Office have here in Alpine. And the police department is performing more poorly than the other agencies as far as the number of cases that are open because they don't the prosecuting agency hadn't received the information, hadn't received blood reports, hadn't received defense reports, et cetera. So the discussions that I had previously that there were cases involving arrests without probable cause are backed up by the data. But the overall view is that I think things could be improved and my recommendation is that there be some more training at the police department, more training on case preparation, more training on the law of probable cause, the law of some of the matters they attend to so that conviction rate will go up at the County Attorney's Office here in Brewster County.
At the last meeting, I had asked, since you seem to be the only one that can talk to Steve Houston, because Steve Houston will not talk to the City Attorney, I mean the City Manager of Alpine, nor will he talk to the Police Chief for the City of Alpine, but he will secretly talk to you and you're able to gather information. Have you asked Steve Houston to come talk to the Chief of Police and or the City Manager regarding his issues?
No.
And why have you not done that? You were asked to do that at the last meeting.
That's Steve Houston is an elected public official, I think, and he's do whatever he wants to do in his office. It's not up to him to decide what to do.
Right, next question. The chart that you prepared regarding the seventy-eight cases, which was seventy-nine cases, now seventy-eight, I'm not going to pull over the case. Who provided this information since, as we discussed at the last meeting, you were illegally given the SEGIS information? So since you can't have it, I presume this chart came from the Brewster County Attorney, is that correct?
The chart came from my offices. Personal review of cases at the County Attorney's Office, not from SEGIS information.
Okay, so once again, you spend more time with the county attorney than you do trying to get issues worked relative to the claim of not sufficient information on the part of the county attorney. I have no more questions.
Mr. Barton, can I have some questions, please?
Can't hear that?
Bear with me if they're repetitive, as you know, it's my first meeting. I apologize if it's information that you've already provided, unfortunately, I'd like to hear it. You made a statement at the bottom of this chart that probable cause was to blame for thirty-four of those cases. That would be the first six boxes at the very top.
Yes.
I have an issue with that on the probable cause. You seem to state that probable cause comes after the investigation. You can have probable cause at the time of the arrest without having probably a possible later point.
Well, you have to understand the difference between the time of arrest and the time of prosecution. And under Texas law, you can't arrest somebody unless there's probable cause that a crime has been committed.
Yes, sir, I understand that and I understand the difference between the two. But you made a broad statement that there was no probable cause. I don't agree with that, as like you stated, there can be probable cause at the time of the arrest. Take the DWI, for example. When they do the SFSTs, there could very probable, have probable cause at that time. You may not have the BAC results that you have stated, but they had probable cause for the arrest.
That's right, and they, and as I told Counselor Stevens, the conclusions here came from personal review of the files, it's not from some compilation. So if there's a decline or dismissal note in the file that talks about no evidence or no probable cause, that's why that's noted. So let's go back to your situation. Somebody's arrested for DWI. The police officers, good faith, believe that somebody was drunk and driving, they arrest them. They send off the breath test or the blood test, well, it comes back and the person's only 4.04, the person's not drunk. So that's going to be a person, case is going to be dismissed for no probable cause or insufficient evidence.
There was probable cause at the time of the arrest. You made remarks that there have been illegal arrests due to probable cause. You have to be specific in that, there seems to be broad accusations that you keep making. A lot of this is due to inadequate investigations, no results. Has the county attorney made an effort to reach out to the Alpine Police Department or Chief Martin to take care of these matters?
Has the Chief Martin reached out to the County Attorney to try to have his dialogue with him?
There are times that the police department is not aware that there is information missing.
Excuse me, Colonel, by May, have you reached out or has the City Manager reached out to the yes, someone else? That the city has reached out to the Brewster County Attorney?
No, my statement was that the Brewster County Attorney does not reach out to the police department and let them know that they are missing information. There are multiple times that reports have brought out, you are aware that I used to work in the DA's office. The reports get sent out and all the information is not readily available. We used to follow up every month with phone calls, emails, and letters to the different agencies requesting the information that we did not have. Sometimes it was we did not have all the information that we had, had we left it alone, it probably could have been dropped for an adequate investigation. But we took the time to ask for what we needed. That seems to be something that is not being done on the part of the county attorney. It seems to be an issue of no communication. I know you cannot reply and that is something that I agree with Counselor Stevens. I wish we had the county attorney here to get his input on that.
Counselor Rodriguez, in the primary, we had worked diligently to communicate that with the county. Tried to get the County Sheriff, County Attorney, County Judge to sit down and meet with Chief Martin. Whole host of issues that have come up relative to these cases that are already alleged to be no probable cause, no case files. I specifically sent a letter to the county attorney this past week closing out that from a city perspective. Because if there's no detail, there's nothing which Chief Martin and I can do. Even the report that I gave for tonight, I mean, it's a pretty high chart, but there's no data, there's no communication back with Chief Martin. He's going to invest all his time sitting down and owning all of these case files. I would expect us to get feedback to say, hey, there's some gaps here. But there is just no detail, and this goes back the last sixty-eight weeks. We're not getting any detail, not from the county attorney, but from the City Attorney.
So, City Manager, you reached out into the county attorney, he has not responded to you?
No. I consider the case, the issues closed with the county. I expect that they're getting everything that they need from us. We're providing, and the Chief Martin, we're as visible as they come in the community. I mean, I walk through Alpine every night, Chief is out there all the time, we're doing coffee with the City Manager, we're doing chat with the Chief. We're doing everything we can to try to communicate. But we can't force the issue with that individual. So my perspective is there's not an issue from the county perspective. Because if there was, they would have reached out specifically to Chief Martin or to us.
So there's a contumby toward in his role then. We're going to have to work on something to get a resolve on it because this has gone on for too long and I know it comes from cities that have worked on it diligently. And we just seem to be spinning our wheels and we can't get the City Attorney to, I'm sorry, the County Attorney to respond to us. We have to show up at the doorstep or what?
We might show that the next city council meeting, allowing this to the county attorney, so that this closes up? Yes.
Okay, video. Okay, any more, City Attorney?
Well, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the City Manager Report.
I'm here in the State Council, the screen share, so everybody have line? Gio, how's it looking on your end?
Looking good.
There we go. Can you still see on the AGO?
Yes, it looks good.
Okay, all right. Want to charge forward with our COVID reporting. This is the file that the New York Times shares with us and this is specific to Texas. And as we can see, we had that new case spike that came down to June, July, and then things were trending down and then we've continued back upward really from the October timeframe. And then it really coincides with the schools going back or whether it's cooler, more people are congregating in wards. Certainly, the chart on the right is the deaths. Have not seen the hockey stick upwards like similar to the new cases. But we're really monitoring that closely to see what from a COVID perspective is resulting Then this particular chart, I think, gives us more specific on the hospitalizations as well as the testing that's going on. This is a new chart from previous meetings. As you'll see, the testing is really accelerating. So from middle of, middle of late August through November, we're really trending up in the state according to our testing. So that's an important point because we see these case counts going up, but we're also increasing our testing. And so one would think that our case counts would come up as well too. But the hospitalizations then become a real important piece of the puzzle to look at. Because as we see, more people are being more significantly hurt by COVID, so that's really the chart. Moving forward, we look at the state of Texas, we'll see that not just El Paso County reaching over to Paulerson County, but really Utsbeth and El Paso right now have had a greater spike in cases. We certainly are tracking and taking that to El Paso because we know we have a lot back and forth happening, especially with the person aggressively being a person here. It's interesting, Houston is down, which was huge. Looks like the Boston, San Antonio, I was giving up. And then, of course, La Beca. So the five metrics that we're looking at, this is the same chart, our occupancy, new infections, the reproduction rate, positivity rate, how much we're doing with the testing. So when we think about that relative to Brewster County, we're gaining new cases. We jumped up to 400,000. So we're in the red zone there, although as Mayor and I were chatting when he came in, that this recent testing that we did over the last week didn't yield as many positive test cases in Alpine as we thought. So take that as a good sign for today, but you know, that could certainly change. The infection rate, or that sometimes called the RNOT rate, that 1.14 number is for every positive case, how many are they infecting those around? We really want that number certainly to be less than one because that means for every infection, you're getting less and less ones. Right now, we're still above one, so we're growing in our case counts. Positive test rate is looking good though, we're sub-five percent on that. And I think that number will improve with this latest round of testing. The ICU has been used or local hospitals to. So this is the Texas chart on that reproduction rate, as we noted in the previous, we're at 1.24, as a state, it's 1.18. We'd like to get that count. This is the chart that our county chairs on the county Facebook page comes off of Jonathan's site. And that's kind of my chart. What I like to look at is on the right-hand side, where they post the active cases in Brewster County as well as the daily hospitalizations. And so, our capacity, we know, is 25 in our hospital, with three ICU capacity. That's those two little figures kind of on the bottom left of the chart. And so, talking to the floors, we do know that our hospital will expand some if their vet capacity is needed. Right now, we're about 40%. Now, we're passing that by 40%. The Saul Ross active student body cases are up to 83. Thirty-two of those folks have been isolated, and their faculty and staff is about 10, 10 members of this unit. They, talking to a couple of folks at university that are aged in this. We do know that there are kids that are from El Paso. And so, there's that propensity of wanting to come home for a long weekend. What the university is really focused on doing is let's get these kids up through this week, get them home for the Thanksgiving break, and then they will come back until, you know, January. That would definitely be a benefit. It's all losses, preparation, execution. I think Saul Ross did a wonderful job. President Gallego and Checo, they really have put the line this long, John Hughes.
So, just because I don't understand, they have 32 isolated, with 83 active. Why are the other 50 isolated?
I do not know that, but I'll find that out. I'll find that one.
And maybe they're quarantined, they're home or whatever, because they might be the kids.
They've commandeered a war, where they take all of the kids that are actively isolated. Bring them food, build a food lab. I do know, Michael Checo had mentioned, one of the concerns is that they're holding the students an extra day. And there are some students in isolation an extra day. So, instead of holding them 10 days, they're holding them a while. And some of the students' parents have not been rolling up yet. But they're just really trying to get their eyes on the change.
Now, I know that there's a meeting today at the county. Has there been any discussion about getting more information about the active cases? Or the underlying cause issues that we have for Alpine? Because we don't want to see they made it elsewhere. And we certainly don't get that here. And it's not a privacy issue, it's just a matter of compiling any discussion.
Right, so at the last couple of CBT meetings that your employers, fast learners, teammates, I asked that we really try to give us more data on hospitalizations and deaths. Do, what's the age, what's the gender, and do they have any underlying health conditions? Because that information is extremely important for us to... I've been shared that HIPAA issues, concerns are all taken at. So, earlier today, I took a chart that our state to the west produces. The governor from New Mexico sends out a charter brigade that identifies the people that have passed away from COVID. What their age is, what their gender is, and whether they have underlying health conditions. So, I sent that back to the county to say, hey, look, I don't believe it's a HIPAA issue. I don't think the Department of Health in New Mexico would be sending out this data if there were HIPAA concerns. And so, we'll continue to push on on that. Because it would be good for us to know on the hospitalizations and the people that have passed away from COVID. What are their age brackets, do they have underlying health conditions? And that just gives us a better idea for us.
I know it's not a HIPAA issue, I used to be responsible for HIPAA for the going. We got 125,000 employees and 650,000 defendants. I do know that inside Alpine, it is not a HIPAA issue, but someone has to go.
If you're just coming up with the age and gender underlying issues, you're not disclosing their names or where they live. So, I can't see it was a HIPAA violation.
I will, I agree.
There are almost seven hospitalizations, are those just local? Or is that people that are hospitalized that were transferred out?
They're local hospitalizations.
So, the number could be higher.
Right, if people were to be transferred out, you know. So, that, you know, somebody is really in a severe position that the hospital may move them to a different location. We've got that AISD. Many of you saw that they moved to remote learning through the Thanksgiving holiday. They canceled their remote learning effect in November 2nd. Then, a week and a half later, they had to be... Part of that is they implemented a rapid test program. So, they're doing significantly more testing on the campuses now. They are going to reassess. You know, come back to school on November 30th, I think they'll reassess at that point. You can carry on to Christmas break, and then what is that? We'll talk about that in the center first.
Do they have a breakdown as far as, like, elementary, middle school, and high school, with the numbers they're at?
I did get a breakdown of that. I did get a breakdown, there were 11 students positive, six were faculty, three were staff, 11 were positive. And there were over 70 people, when they were contact tracing, that they felt were at risk, that need to be quarantined. So, the volume got that heavy, that that's why they adjusted to the number. I think their challenge is with teachers. Because if we don't have enough teachers in school, then you're more effective having the teachers to work at home, provided they're not significantly ill, and they're teaching with your kids. So, I believe, I don't know specifically, but I believe that was a bigger issue.
Because I've drawn by that double matrix on a regular basis, and all the little toddlers all, you know, intermingled with each other.
Okay, great, but open anything and your mind's off.
So, Mayor, you raise a good point, and I'm glad you asked that. So, is it just the high school that's shut down, or it's all the schools? All the schools, okay? And I think the mayor brings up a good point, it would really be nice if, again, we're not after names or whatever, but numbers will be helpful. And they'll get some insight, elementary, middle school, and high school. And related to that, since, are we working together to make sure the schools are open, the lights are turned off when school is out?
I need to talk to Becky, they typically work back with actually text. And they should work with up to El Paso, that's where we're working.
And what caused me to note that was at the high school. So, the high school is now fenced off completely. There are no students covering any area that we protected. And yet, the signal's flashing. And so, it's certainly nice to get that turned off while the fencing is up. Because anyone who goes going down, they find it black, they have to go to the middle. We're not there, we just saw that turned off, I expect it to be turned off for the next two weeks. Wait until the fence comes down?
Because there won't be any students there.
Yeah, so that'd be helpful to this.
City of Alpine, we need to have three employee cases. Predominantly, it's Chief Martin's department, which is our highest people-to-people content department. We have achieved a lot of credit for looking at balancing schedules, health conditions of employees. And we're still, you know, certainly be very diligent about taking temperature daily with people, so that we can identify any issues that are... The, wanted to give a quick update on the fall events. We're sort of monitoring these week to week. Got two more midweek work details tomorrow night, Wednesday for Thanksgiving. We are also looking at the Christmas parade right now, Cynthia, Miss Rugia, Heather and I had a call this morning. That's scheduled for December 5th, but we really want to understand are people that participated? So, we're reaching back out to those groups. They'll send some hosting parade for four, five, or six months, needs to be, at 12:15. So, we'll gauge that based on feedback. We give them a little bit of experience. What used to be the mountain country Christmas in here, they've rebranded it, called it the Alpine Country Christmas. We're going to be out there at the Capitol Church this year. So, I'll look at that. Moving forward onto our ordinance, update road map. Right now, next slide, I've got a chart of those different ordinances. We're looking at some of these key ordinances, or best back counsel, certainly with, I guess, our council now. We will be working with both of you on some things that you see in the communities, that you like your ordinances, changes that you may be working in front of council. Kila Stanford, some of you remember, she was the straight assistant, Jessica, we've reemployed her. She's working front, her GLO. And then, really, the key staff liaisons that would be working with council, myself, on these updates. And in December, we're going to focus a couple of those updates on information discussion, so that we can, you know, get some status on it. And the January, February word, we'll use those for the first and second. And these really are, those are the list of ordinances that we're... The short-term rental, noise ordinances, utility billing ordinances. Let me stop on the utility billing, because we're going to address utility billing two ways. The first update, we're going to structure the ordinance so they can have scheduled fees. And we're going to look at the one-time fees. But the monthly payments that people make, their monthly water bill, their monthly super bill, we're going to address that after we finish the five-year capital plan. That was something we talked about a couple of months ago, at a previous council meeting. So, actually, we've got the engineers here down today, and tomorrow, I'm meeting with them tomorrow to go over what that collection strategy is. I'm really under a lot of pressure, but they did spend some time at least. I think we're going to put a step on, through those updates. Shipping containers, fire inspection fees, those are some of the little, you know, some bolts we need to work through. Our lighting ordinance, we've got our second workshop tomorrow. That will be all on Zoom, should be a good session. We operate a business, we're going to propose a couple of changes there to leave that. Some of our property, that's a bigger chapter that we will need to handle.
So, if you need us on council, to put our hand on the table, which of those lights we want to volunteer?
Correct. Correct. I will say that if putting in Councilor Rodriguez's name on the plan, I would say no. One of the things I had the pleasure of meeting, because it's not my favorite day, was how tremendous amount of experience through text. Very well respected, his English career there. And he's, we're looking at how we handle our streets or until these, I'm going to link on, for example. That's going to be important. But certainly, yes, look at this list, if there are a couple of these ordinances that you say, hey, I want to work on it. Mayor, this doesn't exclude you. You're welcome to jump in as well.
Absolutely. On the lighting, are we going to have, on the lighting, are we going to have Bill Rand from the Conservatory in on that Zoom?
Yeah, Bill Rand gave the first presentation, and he'll be engaged tomorrow night, or tomorrow night.
In fact, the first workshop, he did a lot of demo from where you're sitting with the lights up, your locker pool and stuff.
Yeah, because I saw that Down the Rain one time, and he did it there.
Really good presentation. So, the next section is really scheduled fees, I'm not going to worry with all these high charts. They'll be uploaded online, you can look at later as well. This was a project that Kila was working on. And what we were really, I think, I think what the vision was, is how do you take some of these fees that are scattered across our whole of ordinances? And you pull those together into a single document? That when we go through our budget processing, council can take a look at that and say, hey, these fees still make sense, or we need to make an adjustment. And instead of that, going to go through each COVID section, each ordinance, we are extracting those fees, we're going to build its own schedule of fee ordinance. We will have to amend all the existing ordinances to point to that appendix. But that's the work that Kila's pulled together for us right now. So, I just wanted to give you somewhat of a visual representation of how much of that is really out there. Between control, headquarters, technicals license for those folks that you see, where they sell honey and fruit, things of that nature. So, probably we've got things relative to our civic center, or other buildings that we need to... The idea is to pull a standard fees, look at them in its own appendix. We are not going to include building permit fees. We're going to handle those all separate. It just, it becomes overwhelming if we add all of these things. Right now, I've asked Kila, Gila, to keep this.
Well, and for the rest of council, the wisdom behind it is, we have 98 chapters in our full ordinances. In order to change fees, you actually have to pass an ordinance change. It takes a first reading, a public hearing. Action items on a particular city council meeting, we consume ourselves with all of that. So, putting it into a single ordinance and allowing it to be reviewed once a year gives us the opportunity to cover all at once, and if a city ordinance alone, we'll be able to take the financial side of it. I think it's a great, it's a huge undertaking.
Well, when we hired Kila back, that was one thing she approached with us, their capacity to run work. So, I said, it's a whole other... She's good, so she'll, she'll continue to do this to me. Before the questions come in, Gila.
Good evening, Mayor.
To the new council members, congratulations. Chief, take that, just a mic.
Okay. The quarter was October, September, October, November that I'm reporting on today. First, we hired a new officer, he comes, Joel Ponce, he comes to us from El Paso. He's brand new out of the academy. He and his wife now live here, his wife finally found employment here in the city. So, we go up for them, and Officer Ponce has completed his FTO training, and is still on probation, but he's still, he's doing real good. Next slide please. Moving on, we did the national night out. And what we did is something a little different this year with the COVID in mind, is we... Is we went to the football game and purchased all the drinks for both the home and the visitor's side. That was something we did rather than cook hot dogs and have giveaways like what we normally do. We felt that was more appropriate due to the COVID. Next, the Trump train. We had the Trump rally that we escorted through town, went around the loop, back to City Hall. And I must say, I'm gonna estimate probably hundred and twenty vehicles in that Trump train. It was something to see if everyone, anyone saw that. That, I've never seen anything like that. I think once we left this location and went down the runway, we were almost to the Loop Road before the last car got out of the parking lot. That's how long it was. No hiccups, no, no complaints that I was made aware of, everything went real good. And next we had the homecoming parade. This was when they had a bonfire. We, I think high school kids enjoyed that. That was real successful. We did the red ribbon week. It kind of got cut short this year because it was right there with only coat, coat stamp we had. Actually, this group right here, we cut it short and they didn't let the other groups come out because the temperature was dropping so much. And the next day, we were going to be going to the junior house to do the same thing and they canceled it completely. So that was kind of cut short this year due to the weather. But I think for at least the kids that did get to attend, I think they enjoyed it. They, we talked to them, showed them some of our equipment that we have, some of the things that we do. It's, it was amazing to be to ask how many of y'all want to be police officers and how many raised their hands. That was very encouraging. So, okay, next slide is the visalight. That went real smooth. We had probably in the neighborhood, I'm gonna say between thirty-five to fifty-five walkers. The really good one, the fun one, I think all the kids got a kick out of was the Halloween. I'm gonna estimate in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty to two hundred kids came out dressed up as all different things. There was store-bought costumes, there was homemade costumes. There was actually a computer. A little guy was dressed up as some sort of a computer. I've never seen anything like it. But we gave, gave out candy, thanks with the city's help. We packaged it up in individual bags with candy in them and we handed that out. We had two lines. We had one where the kids come through and they had a little trail to follow and see the little obstacles that they had set up for them. And then we had a drive-through line where we were, they could just drive up and we would give them candy through them. They didn't even have to get out of the car. And I think that was a really good, successful way of doing it with, again, the COVID in mind. Next is, gonna recognize these three officers. We've got Edward Radoza, promoted him to a criminal investigator. He's doing a really good job. Valerie Cantani, she's assigned to DEA currently and promoted her to a sergeant. And Kirk Kaufman is well-deserved lieutenant over patrol there. So congratulations to these three officers, they're doing an outstanding job for me. I really thank them for the work that they do. I am gonna touch on Kirk Kaufman. He did attend the taping conference, I believe it was two weeks ago, and obtained his intermediate certificate in the handling of evidence. If you know anything about how the police department structured, he keeps me out of jail. If anything happens to evidence, it falls on me. So I really appreciate him protecting me in this aspect of the job. One thing, a slide I don't have on there regarding to myself is I did attend the chief's. The chief's, new chief development in Huntsville, Texas. I did complete that. That is a required course for, for a chief. I do have another one to attend, but I don't have to be in a big rush to attend that one. I just have a year. So I will be looking for that. Grants. We've been awarded three grants total. The first one is, is a benefit. It's eight thousand dollars to pay out in overtime for our employees. The second one is from the office of the governor and it covers two hours. One being the bodyboard cameras. Our department is down to three and sometimes it will get it to work, four cameras that work. So it's difficult when you have more than two to three officers on the street. You lose the camera, someone's calling for another camera. So we're gonna purchase new, new body cameras and also body armor to protect our officers. So we really are happy about receiving these two grants. I broke this down, I combined it, a total of seventy-five citations in this quarter. It averages out to twenty-five citations a month. That's not counting the boarding contacts that we have. Our accidents have really gone down. I think it's due to a couple of things. I don't think there was as much traffic in this quarter as there was in the past, last year in this quarter. And as a result of that, our accidents have gone down. We were averaging six to eight accidents a month and we're averaging four. So I don't know what I can contribute that to, but whatever we're doing is working. I think the enhanced patrol in the city is a major part of that. Okay. I talked about this at my last meeting. I thought I would put it up on the screen where y'all could actually see it this time. This, I've requested a audit be conducted from SEGA's. And this is their result. Notes out here. The, what this is showing you is at two thousand and fifteen, we're at a hundred percent. Two thousand and sixteen is showing ninety percent. Seventeen is showing ninety-six percent. Two thousand and eighteen is ninety percent. Two thousand and nineteen is at fifty-nine percent. And. Slides are gonna kind of explain this. This is what the, make some statements. This is what SEGA's sent me. This is their remarks in a letter I received from them. That last paragraph, paragraph is what I'm really proud of. The patch breakdown percentage by the year, two thousand and nineteen shows fifty-nine percent. This is normal since most recent year. In many cases are still going through the system, especially felons, which can take years. And the very top one there is very impressive. The requirement's ninety percent by July. So reaching ninety percent early in the cycle is impressive. And folks were already there. We're doing good. I believe that's my last slide, did. Okay, can I go back to the previous? I would like to touch on that. While I was in school last week, I gave Captain Earl Soya a job to do for me. And that was to get a hold of the county attorney's office and let's figure out a process or what needs to be done on cases that are outstanding. And I talked to him just before I came up here and he has been in contact with the county attorney's office. And he told me that we are at about ninety-seven percent complete on our cases, what they're asking for. And we have found that a lot of cases were turned in that they were saying was never turned in. And we provided proof where the county attorney's office actually received the case and they signed for. Some of the cases in question are outstanding due to pending lab results from DPS. In some cases, what I was told prior to me coming to the police department, that the county attorney's office would not even accept the case. Like in, like in your example, in the DWI case, that the county attorney's office would not even accept the case without the lab results. So that may be where you're seeing where there's no cases turned in. It's not that we're not trying to turn them in. The county attorney won't accept them without the lab results. And I have to tell you that sometimes it takes over a year to get that lab results from DPS. So that's an issue. That's not what Mr. Potten's bringing up. I just wanted to point that out. So there are underlying circumstances, especially in our felony cases, that to obtain information out of cell phones, to obtain information out of black boxes, out of vehicles is a process. And sometimes it may take a year to get this information. And all the prosecutors, and when I say prosecutors, I mean the district attorney and the county attorney. All they have to do is reach out, stay in contact with us. We're working on it. We're trying to do everything we can to get you what we need to prosecute these cases. But there's always a stumbling block. I have implemented some changes on how our cases are being handled. That may be one thing that will keep us a better tracking system of our cases and what's, what's being done and where we're standing on getting turned in. And hopefully this is what improves our relationship with prosecutors where there's not any doubt. And what you do is try.
Yes, sir. So Chief, I'm a little slow. I'm a little slow.
Okay.
What I think I heard you say is Captain Soya talked with the Brewster County Attorney and gave him information that is contradictory to what our city attorney is reporting. Did I get that right?
You are correct. And it was not Steve Houston. He talked to Yvette Villa, which is one of the girls that works in his office. That's who he's been working with. To clear up the issues supposedly that Mr. Potten is trying to bring to lab to try to make the police department look like we're not doing our job.
So Steve Houston still will not call you despite your outreach. Captain Soya's had a discussion with his office and says, hey, life's good. We're happy with what the city police is doing. This sounds more personal than anything else I'll ever do.
You are correct. And council, I wasn't gonna go this way, but I am gonna mention this to you. When you arrest a prosecutor's family member and put them in jail, that causes problems between with that agency and that agency. That's all I'm gonna mention on that.
Those are great results.
First of all, I just want to thank you for reaching out. Happy to hear your reach out to the county council office in hopes of getting this worked out. One thing I do wanna, like, uh, perhaps you said, I'm a little spoke. One of the big things that Barbara was talking about in the other cases, are there not other issues to take into account? That they, myself, and other cases other than people talking.
Oh, there's, there's, there's a lot of different reasons. Such as what I just mentioned about getting evidence back from the lab in a timely manner. That case stays open compared to opening his office until I get that lab results.
But that doesn't mean that Alhaidon's department is not with their documents.
We've done everything, we've been in our power, we've made an arrest. The arrested party has gone in front of a magistrate. The magistrate finds probable cause, backing up the arrest, that individual's put in jail. We then do the case report, collect the evidence, whether it be a blood test or a breath test. Of course, a blood test, again, can take up to a year to get the results from the lab. And once that is then obtained from the lab, that's turned into, that case will show that he opened into his office until everything gets there for him to prosecute case. Is that, does that?
Couple of comments to you.
Yes, sir.
I want to congratulate your officers for my promotions. Thank you for breaking up the building and also to you and Captain Soya for the breakthrough in getting through to the DA. And I think that's first step in clearing out the muddy waters that's been polluting the air for some time now. So I think we can start moving forward. So I want to thank you for that.
Communication is the key. That's, that's, that's what we're working on. Are you up to staff right now? I'm sorry?
Are you up to staff?
No, sir. I do currently have, I didn't touch on this, I do currently have two dispatchers quarantined that have voted to testify as to the COVID. And I have two officers under quarantine. And them and some of the rest of us got tested today. There's a little bit of concern, so we'll be in real careful around the office. I know we're sanitizing pretty hard. Chief, you had one, one last slide on this speed limit. Oh, here it is. Sorry. This one I would like to put out to council for consideration. Okay? There was some discussion here while back in regards to the twenty mile per hour speed limit zone on Daegu. And I got to looking at it and studying some of the areas of town. And I'll tell you, and Councilor Stevens, you touched on one earlier, is fighting buck around the golf course in that area. We have, you know, we're, we're a tourist town. We have a lot of tourists here that want to slow down and come downtown and enjoy it and walk around our city. And, you know, there's a very high tourist population. People that live here, people enjoy walking. I mean, I know our city manager, get up early enough in the morning, you'll see him walking here and there. There's people that just like to walk for pleasure, for exercise, whatever it might be. Kids, kids going to the parks, they're riding their bicycle in our city streets. And, you know, with all that being said, I would ask city council to consider that all city streets inside the city of Alpine, the, the speed limit they lowered to thirty, I'm sorry, it's currently thirty miles per hour. People drive thirty miles. Lower it to twenty. They're gonna drive twenty miles. Let's, let's slow down and enjoy Alpine. But this would not affect the, the major streets, the textile streets. We don't have control of those within our. Council to consider. And if you deem that it be a good idea, that we move forward on it. Any questions on that?
No questions, just comment that I, you know, you do need to get answers. I'm seeing that's the majority of our streets are in residence.
Thank you. Chief, are you able to take Jennifer off of you for us?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty. So I'm gonna go over our quarterly report for, from July through September of this year. My first slide's gonna be of our stray intakes. As you can see, we had a bit of a decline in, from between July and August. September kind of gradually picked up a little bit. Cats are on the decline. If you look at my graphs on the right, our dogs are pretty much even around the board in regards to where we're finding them in the wards, which I find interesting. I don't know if this information will eventually show, you know, if we have a, a problem area in town or not. But that's kind of why I've been collecting the data that I have and showing them in these graphs. Cats, on the other hand, we saw more in Ward Five these last few months. This all, these are all animals that are adoptable animals, friendly animals, not feral cats in this graph in particular. So I know I'll actually show the feral cats a little later. My next, my next. Go ahead.
I know why it isn't working. I would, I saw why it isn't.
I can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I know why. Friend, we have a neighbor down the street from me who feeds a lot of cats.
Which is interesting. Um, when I, when we, when I show you my feral cats, uh, um, graph, it's a different ward actually that we're finding more feral cats. So, um, like I said, these are just, I'm just collecting data, just kind of trying to see where our problem areas are, if, if this is, um, you know, if this will eventually, you know, over time, show us. Um, for this next slide here, um, this is just over the la, the entire year, um, so far between January and September. Um, you can see that there was a dramatic decrease between March and April. Um, and then an increase between, uh, June and July. So, and this is just, you know, me being skeptical here, if it was maybe, um, because we were on lockdown, that we had a, a decrease in our, uh, our stray, um, intakes, and then people went back to work and it immediately jumped up. Um, you know, that's just speculation, but, um, I mean, it might be, it might be a good, um, a good guess as to why our numbers look the way they do there. Um, this is our feral cat, um, slide. Uh, we, we did get more feral cats in Ward Four. Um, and Ward One. Um, as you can see in Ward Five, we didn't get any feral cats. So going back to the other slide, uh, showing that our, our adoptable friendly cats that we picked up were, were found in Ward Five, the cats, um, that were feral cats were actually in four, four and one, which was interesting to me.
What's there between a feral cat and a stray cat? The stray cat gets tagged and feral doesn't have the tags, nothing to do with it?
Feral cats are typically our cats that, um, are not handleable, you know, they're, um, we can't touch them. They, um, you know, they're, they're more of a wild cat. They're not, they're not somebody's house cat. So stray cat in, in that regard is, is just a, you know, uh, somebody's house cat roaming around or somebody's friendly cat that they have outside. Um, this is just a little, just to show you between 2018 to, to now in regards to July and September where our numbers were, it looks like, um, we are, um, a lot lower than we were in, uh, 2019 in regards to our stray animal intake. Um, a little bit closer to where we were in 2018. Um, the next slide, please. Um, surrenders, we have, um, put on hold since March, since we, we've, um, had the, um, lockdown and all of that. Um, we are slowly, um, taking in surrenders now. Oops. Excuse me. We did take in four, um, this quarter. Um, we're trying to, um, find other options for people, um, you know, other rescues, seeing if they can find homes on their own. And that tends to, tends to have been working. Um, while we're, we're trying to hold off on surrenders. We just wanted to keep our population low just in case of the unknown. You know, if we had to shut down the shelter for whatever reason. And people have been really, um, understanding with that. So, um, like I said, just four dogs this last three months as surrenders and, um, we seem to do pretty well there. Next slide, please. Um, we did have a seizure warrant in June. Um, fortunately, two of the dogs came in, uh, gave birth. So there's just some pictures of our puppies that were born in the shelter. Um, not all of the puppies in those litters made it. Um, the ones that did, um, were all transported to other rescues along with their moms. Um, I can tell you that, um, several of them have, um, if not all of them now, but I know of several of them have already gotten into homes. So it was a nice story. Um, next slide, please. Um, adoption. So this chart's kind of all off the board. I don't know if we'll ever find a, you know, any kind of pattern with my charts, but I just wanted to show you kind of where we were, um, over the last, um, nine months, uh, in regards to our adoptions and then kind of show you, um, where we were in 2018, 2019 and 2020 in regards to third quarter. Um, we are definitely, um, low, a low amount of adoptions, uh, this year as compared to last year and the year before that. Um, this actually, this, uh, graph on the, on the right actually, um, is very comparable to the amount of animals that we've picked up. So it does, they're, they're very similar. It looks like that, you know, we are moving them out as fast as we're moving them in. So, you know, if we have a high amount of, um, animals that come in, we have a high amount of adoptions. If we have a low amount of animals that come in, we have a lower amount of adoptions, which makes sense. Um, next slide. Uh, transports, we, uh, moved 41 animals out the last three months, uh, 21 cats, 20 dogs. Um, wanted to, a big shout out to, um, One Tail at a Time, which is our, um, one of our partners that we work with in Oregon, um, who took quite a few of these animals. Um, Alpine Humane Society, who helped it make this possible with helping us with transports, getting health certificates, um, and all that. Um, the dog that you see here on the screen actually, um, was in our system for 541 days, which is very unheard of for us. Um, the dog was in our shelter for a while, a long time, actually, almost a year. And then it went into foster home and then it, then it got approved to go on a transport. And you can see, um, this little airplane on here is, um, the, uh, dog is my co-pilot. He, uh, this guy actually volunteers his services to transport these dogs to these northern states to find homes. So, um, and then you can see in the picture there, Dez finally got home after 541 days in our system. So, um, it, you know, it takes a lot of work. Some of these dogs are a little harder to move, but, um, this was a really cool thing, um, to finally get him into a good place. Um, next slide. Uh, these are citations issued. Um, we had, uh, 53 issued, um, total. You can see that, uh, about half of our citations that we do issue are of course running at large. Um, and then the other ones that are on there, no license, no microchip. We typically will do a no license and no microchip with an animal running at large ticket. Um, if they don't have either one of those. Next slide. Microchips, um, we placed 28 microchips, uh, 12 cats and 16 dogs. Um, I did want to note that it is $15 at our shelter, um, for us to place them for you. Um, we'll, we'll register the chips there on site. Um, and it is an ordinance. So if anybody wants to come up during the week and get it done, um, we'll be happy to help you with that. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, city licensing. Um, I just kind of wanted to put up our fees here, um, and kind of explain why we do encourage city licensing. Um, you cannot get a city license without a rabies vaccination. Um, so, um, that encourages people to get that rabies vaccine. It's very important. Um, and it also puts another piece of identification on your pet. Um, all very good reasons to, um, get your animal city licensed. Um, it is also an ordinance. So, um, we definitely encourage that. If you bring up a, uh, rabies certificate or proof of rabies, um, vaccination, we will do that at the shelter, um, seven days a week. Uh, next slide. Um, so this is kind of, I wanted to talk a little bit about running at large. Um, and this is, this is straight from our ordinance. Um, there's been some questions of, you know, what's considered running at large? Um, you know, my dog was in my front yard. Why is that? Why is my dog considered loose? Well, if your dog isn't in a fence or, you know, in your immediate control, your dog is running at large. Um, and if you read through here, you know, no, no person keeping or harboring any animal or fowl shall, um, permit such animal, um, to run loose. Um, in any of the public right of ways of the city or upon the property of another, except in, in enclosures on the private property owned or leased by a person keeping or harboring such animal. So, um, if there's ever any question about this, um, I'm always open to talk about it. Um, you know, and if, if anybody wants to have this ordinance changed by any means, I definitely want to have that discussion. But, um, this is at this point what our ordinance reads and, um, and what we abide by when we're writing citations in regards to that.
Jennifer, thanks for making that, I think it's important. If there's a problem, there's a problem. If there's an animal that's on the street or an individual that's walking down the street. They're walking down the street or the sidewalk and that animal starts charging at you. If it's not a stray, that could be a scary situation. So that is part of what, uh, Jennifer is going to include. Though the dog may stay in the car. You as the person walking down the street doesn't know. You see that dog running, charging at you. There's not a fence there, there's not a street, a dog. That's part of what.
Yeah, if there's any, if, if there's any chance that your dog can, um, step into that public right of way and attack a person or an animal or, you know, even get hit, hit themselves, um, the dog is loose. Um, um, this actually was brought, brought up, I believe by Ramon last, maybe one or two, uh, meetings ago, um, about vaccinations and why we can't do it at the shelter, rabies vaccinations, why we can't do it at the shelter. So I just kind of wanted to put a little blurb in here about this. Um, it is, um, administering for the public would be considered a non-veterinarian performing veterinary care without a license. So, um, you know, and there's, there's also liabilities with us administering any kind of vaccinations, um, to the public if they had an animal had an allergic reaction or, um, anything like that. We just don't want to be held liable, liable for that. Um, we can still do December part of, oh, bordatella, feline leukemia and, uh, FBRCP at the shelter for our own shelter animals. Um, but a rabies vaccination has got to be administered by a licensed veterinarian. By law. Okay. Um, these are animal bites. Um, we didn't have very many. I like to see zero, obviously. Um, but if you look, we're, you know, we barely had any the second quarter and the third quarter. Um, a dramatic change from last year, as you can see. Um, our numbers last year were looks like probably eight or more within the third quarter of last year. Um, so I, I'd really like to see this graph be at zero, but, um, to see that decline, uh, means that I think that, you know, we're doing something, um, in regards to our animals running loose. I mean, that's, that's a big deal. That's where some of our bites come from. Um, educating the public, um, you know, things like that, trying to decrease the, the amount of animal bites, um, that occur. Um, donations. So we, we did have, um, quite a few donations. Um, one being a, a new washing machine. Uh, we, our washing machine actually went down. We were not able to have it repaired. Um, so we actually had a very generous donor, um, give us a new washing machine. So I wanted to thank them. Um, also people just coming up and bringing Clorox wipes, litter, treats. Um, we always are in need of things like that. So, um, feel free, if you, if you can find Clorox wipes, we're appreciative. But anything, any kind of donations like that to the animals, um, we definitely want to just, uh, say thank you for that. Anybody have any questions?
No, my question, I'm the one that asked about the vaccine.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay. Oh, you're very welcome, Andy. Thank you.
Any questions for her? And there's four eight and we have any public terms? For Senator. Senator, uh, is anybody moved it out? Uh, the rule of minutes for the city council.
I'll second.
Okay. Been seconded by me, um, any discussion? Season nine, all is in favor. Please do my hand. Betty. There you go. Okay. It's unanimous.
It's really hard to hear you guys.
Okay.
I, I don't think Betty can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can barely hear you.
The audio is muffled for some reason. I'm not sure what happened. I, uh, asked Abel to look into it.
Okay.
I've got one here. But we might get a lever. Button, right? How about now? Yep. Okay. Alrighty, let's wait and move on to information and discussion.
Those from the city center are completely inaudible.
Can you not hear us? Gio, can you hear us?
Hmm, it's very muffled. I'm not sure what happened. We were hearing perfectly clearly earlier. It's still very muffled.
Can you, can you hear me?
That, that's clear, very clear.
Want to test the mic? Try that just to hit a test.
Did, did that get any better, Gio, or?
Yes, it did get better.
Can you hear us now, fine?
Um, it's, it's a little better.
Maria, can you hear us?
I can hear you a little bit better. It's still really quiet.
Did you turn that up a little bit there? Is, is that any better?
I mean, it's better than it was before, but it's still really quiet.
Any better now?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, let's progress forward. Let's see, uh, information discussion on charter discussion role. Mayor is defined by the city of Alpine Charter and interference with administration is outlined by section 3.10 of the city charter. Um, I put this on the agenda, uh, for a couple of reasons this week. Uh, wanted to, uh, number one, uh, make sure that we're all grounded, on, you know, each of the roles here. And I think the timing of it is good with having, uh, two new council members on council. The, uh, I, I had sent out a memo back in October relative to, uh, interference, uh, with administration. And in, in our charter, uh, what's defined, uh, as interference is, is really, um, if an elected official is working directly with a staff member, uh, without my knowledge or without the city manager's knowledge. Um, and it is very important, uh, speaking, you know, as a city manager, uh, that I am kept in the loop on questions and concerns, uh, because ultimately I'm accountable and responsible for those. And, um, I, I very much am one who believes in chain of command. Uh, I myself did not serve in the military, uh, but the majority of my family has. Many are still currently active. Uh, and I do fundamentally believe that as an organization, we run better, uh, when up and down, we are first on, on what's going on. So that, um, when I look across our departments, we have challenges that come up. when I look across our departments, we have challenges that come up. Obviously Chief Martin's division is monitored annually. They're measured annually. They're inspected annually. He and I have a very good working relationship. And just as I don't go talk to his employees directly without he and I having a conversation first, you know, it's, it's important that, you know, we're all very mindful of those types of behaviors. On our utility side and our sanitation side, we are governed by TCEQ at the state level. And historically, we've always had to work through a level of investigations, a level of audits. You know, that's just part of running these types of facilities and programs. So my responsibility as a city manager is to be acutely aware of everything going on in the organization. Okay? You know, I have come across a few issues in, in mayor. You've, you've had, you know, three instances recently where you've reached out directly to employees and not, not included me in that discussion.
All right, can you give an example? Because maybe I'm, I'm not.
So the first one, the first one, you went out to the wastewater treatment plant.
I just visited like everybody visits, you know, the different departments.
But, but you didn't notify me.
Oh, I didn't know it was supposed to because, as you know, I see the employees work in the streets. And if I see them now, stop and, and, you know, compliment them on their work or just chit chat with them. And that's it. And that's all I did is the wastewater treatment plant. I just drove by, visited with the guys, nothing more. You know, I didn't give them any direction to do this or do that because that's not in my, under my scope. That's yours.
So, so what happens, the, the end result is when you show up there and they get nervous and they wonder, why is the mayor showing up here? And from a communication perspective, it's important that I'm aware, that the department head is aware that especially the wastewater treatment plant, that's not something that we just drive by in the course of daily riding. Certainly you're going to see employees in the field and you're going to see them out at the grocery store. You're going to see them at a football game or a volleyball game. And that is, is just part of life that we know in our community. But if you have questions about operations, that has to come to me. And if it doesn't come to me, then I'm not aware. And I, I work very hard to be a straight shooter. And so if there are issues or items that come up, that's part of when, when we prepare our staff reports, that's part of the rigor that we go through is talking about the issues and the items that are most concerned to the city. And we use these times to have that open dialogue with the council as well. And want to make sure that, that we get, you know, stay very grounded on that.
You know, and when I went there, I told them, I'm just here to visit, you know, I was going, guys, you know, that's it. I didn't tell them, hey, have you done this? Have you done that? Da, da, da. And it's something that we've, that's been done in the past and no one's ever alerted to my attention that I was violating the charter. That was not my intent. My intent was just because I visit with, you know, I see the other guys in the department and stuff. And I just want to go and check, make sure that, okay, that's it. I'm not telling them, you need to do this, you need to, you know, this type of thing. It's just a visit, a drop by visit by an official. But now we tell them, I'm here just to visit. I'm not here to give any guidance or anything like that. So that's, I mean, that's happened in the past, but I've never been made aware of it and that I was violating the charter.
Well, in my previous four years with the city, it was always standard protocol. I always talked to elected officials and said, if you want to schedule a visit, let me know, we'll schedule a visit. Scheduled it when Nancy Antrim, who was city council, scheduled one with Cincin Salas when she was city council. All of those get scheduled. And we work very hard to make those operations open and visible. But I need to know. And if, short of that, I, I've got a lot of initiatives, like for example, at the wastewater treatment plant, as I mentioned earlier, we've got our engineer out. We're looking at some changes that we need to make there relative to guidance from TCEQ. On our water collection, we just had our public drinking water on it this last week. We've got to make some adjustments there. So all of those things are in motion. And if a council member or elected official is going to come out, I want to be able to also preface those things that we're working on there too.
You know, I've made visits there before when you were the city manager back in 16. And nothing was ever mentioned to me then.
Well, historically, everybody has called me and I schedule those. Second example, Randy Guzman. He gets a call about, in a discussion about licensing with people. And then that question came up, you asked Scott Gary when he was presenting the last meeting. So he felt like he was jaded and he would call one of his employees ahead of time and had a conversation with him about licensing. That's an operational question. You jumped to me, you jumped Scott, and we talked directly to his employee. I mean, that's, that's just wrong.
Okay, then, you know, I apologize for that. I wasn't aware that I was violating anything. So.
Yeah, but what was your purpose of that?
Nothing. It was just, I was taken because I remember Scott, you had said Scott was gonna be his manager. And my only simple question was, if something happened to him, and we were all here at city council when I said, if something happens to Randy, who's gonna take over?
And when you have those concerns, you need to direct them to me. You don't go to a frontline employee or to a manager and ask those questions. The charter is very specific.
Yeah, and I brought that question up at city council. And no one said anything about it.
After you went and approached your employee.
It was, okay, not until before.
I asked him the next morning.
Okay.
Andy, I asked him the next morning.
Okay, if that's what it was, if, if, you know, then it's my fault. Okay? That was no intent because I just want to make sure there was backup there. Because, I mean, that's, that's.
That's, that's why I'm hired.
Okay.
That's why I'm hired. That's my job. And when people are going and asking these questions, okay, I view that as an erosion of confidence. And then we need to have that conversation here in an open meeting. Because I do take my job seriously.
But I know you do, and it wasn't no intent to circumvent you. Okay?
And then I wasted half an hour following Maureen dealing with an upset employee. So it hasn't, with an upset employee. Because the gentleman that works for me wants to know where that question came from. Okay? So it's creating unnecessary work and unnecessary conversations and workloads. And it creates a sense of distrust.
Well, you should have, you know, given me a call or something, hey, you know, you're, you're certmenting the process, not a problem.
That's why we're having this conversation right here.
Now it's coming up. But, you know, when it happened right back then, you should have said, Mayor, you can't be doing that. You got to go to me. End of story.
We're having the conversation.
Now we're having it a month later. Yes.
Because it happened repetitive times.
One time with Maureen.
And.
And one time, and one time at, at the waste treatment plant.
And then when you were collecting information on the eligibility of Ms. Rodriguez for the position, you were calling payroll.
I called, yes, I did. And then she referred me to you because I didn't know the process. Because it's like you're asking for an, for an open information. And we've done that. We've always gone to, to them. Okay? And then she says, I can't answer that. Then I went to you.
And that's what we're talking about today.
Right, and that's what we're talking about right now.
Information, questions need to come directly.
Right, and that's what I did, which is, I can't answer that. And immediately I called you or text you, I think it was.
The next day.
Right.
It wasn't immediate, it was the next day.
No, it wasn't immediate, it was the next day, but I did refer back to you.
Okay. You know, the, the other piece of this is the role of the, the mayor is defined by the charter. You know, I know a couple of meetings ago, you adjourned an item about the meeting and placement of items on the agenda. Basically, our charter outlines that the council determines, of course, in the order of the meetings being ordinance. And so those are piece parts that council determines. We are a council manager, form of government. The mayor position is limited in City of Alpine.
And I think I gave that to you. It was addressed to you. And then on the, it said Eric Zimmer.
Relative to the items that go on the agenda, as I've shared with you, if it's an actionable item, either council or myself have to, have to sponsor that item on the agenda.
But it did go through the process on that one.
And I can put it on the agenda because there wasn't sufficient backup.
Right, and then, you know, later on, you text me and said, hey, not sufficient item. But it went through the process.
That's how we gotta continue to operate.
Okay.
That's all, yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and we want to, item 11, action items to be accommodated by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited to ten per meeting. After being called upon by the mayor, mayor program, citizens are required to state their name and the board of emergency side. Priority will be given to, given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property in the city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak here someplace. Item number one, Councilman Curry.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the city council discuss the performance of the city attorney and take action to terminate his contract with the city effective immediately.
Little second motion.
Motion's been made and second, in the discussion.
I have, I have some discussion, some stuff to say. I want to start out with saying that the city's charter states that the duties of the city attorney shall be to serve as legal advisor to the council, to all offices, departments, and agencies of the city, and to all officers and employees of the city in matters relating to their official duties. Represent the city in all legal proceedings, perform all services. Incident to his or her position, as may be required by, by statute, this charter, ordinance, or as directed by the council. While Rod Potten has served to meet most of the city charter obligations, it has become increasingly clear that there are conflicts of interest in how the city attorney, city attorney fulfills those responsibilities. He has not met the expectations of providing sound legal advice on all matters for the city. And there is a significant lack of trust by seniors, city employees, and some members of the city council. Thus, the motion to terminate his employment with the city. We have heard in city council from senior city employees regarding their lack of trust when it comes to consulting with them prior to cases being heard at municipal court and lack of preparation for cases. Rather than discuss with the city manager, chief of police, or city council concerns that he received from the Brewster County Attorney about the Alpine Police Department, he chose to write letters to the state attorney general requesting for a formal investigation into the Alpine City Police Department, thereby putting the city at risk and liable for lawsuits. These letters were written without discussion or consultation with city council. Since reporting the concerns about the Alpine's Police Department, and after the request for specific information by council, he pursued an illegal and illegally received a report from the county attorney that provided specific details. When it comes to interactions about city business, there have been more meetings with the Brewster County Attorney and Brewster County Sheriff than with the council on these matters. In spite of his interactions with both and a request by city council that he caused both to have a meeting with the city manager or chief of police, there still hasn't been a meeting. These are the reasons I think we need to have this discussion.
Okay, any more discussion?
I can't hear very well. I can't hear anymore of what, what she's saying.
Yes, sir.
With the way the incoming councilman, thank you for willing to serve for your community, Oscar Coco, support five. Back to this item in reference to your city attorney, I want to reiterate tonight, three area, three terms that we used at this meeting, conflict of interest, the question of ethics, and subordination if it applies. And now the word, the topic of conflict of interest, mayor and city attorney, now that we're in the topic. We know for a fact, all of us do, that two of your councilmen were retained by, 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 uh, Rob Potten, they did legal work for them. That question of ethics was embraced at this meeting. So this time, once again, this conflict of interest does apply as a, an attorney. What I should know this. And of course, the ethics, conflict of interest, all that that is going on. There is a breakdown of communication within departments, within the city of Alpine. So I say again tonight, to the city, to the committee, in support of the police department of Alpine, police committee, if we continue to run all these cases through the shredder and attorney available hours, we're not going to get no word. This is a finger. This is no accountability. And the taxpayers shouldn't have to put up with this. I ask your council to make the right decision again tonight. Terminate this contract or ask for his resignation with all respect. And I thank you so much for your time, council.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Any more comments? Any more comments? Okay, say none, then call for a question. Almost in favor, raise your right hand. Betty? Can, can you see her right?
Betty, did you raise your hand? Yeah, it went up.
It went up?
Yeah.
And?
Maria's hands up.
Okay. Go ahead. Oppose? One? Okay, motion pairs. Thank you. Let's move on to item number two, city manager.
Mayor, council, item number two is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on the recommendation on resolution 2020-11-14 in regard to electro, electric provider services for the city of Alpine. Before we have a formal motion on that, I just wanted to identify that we did have two proposals that came in on our RFP. We, Megan and I gave the background on both of those as were provided in the packet. TXU, one of the respondents is our existing provider. Reliant is the other provider. They're a large provider. They gave us better pricing. My recommendation would be that we go with Reliant. They have a better customer service portal. Their prices are better. Those are the key drivers for us as a city. The question would be what council would be willing to do, either one, two, three, four, or five year contract on that. So I would ask the motion be made relative to the service provider and year contract on that. So I would ask the motion be made relative to the service provider and a term. I'm comfortable with going out to three year or to five years, though many times we like to keep things at three years just to give us some flexibility within thirty-six months. So with that being said, I'll be quiet so you can make a motion.
Entertained a motion. Yes, sir.
So I make the motion that the city council approve the recommendation to have Reliant Electric as the city's electricity provider for resolution 2020-11-14. And that let's make that record, that's the motion.
It's your motion. Okay. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second on the motion. Now discussion.
Okay, so now, I did not make the point about the the term because the question that would be helpful to understand is what is their primary, do we know what their primary electricity generation approach is? And the reason I ask that, you know, the price, you have .35 cents, you know, per kilowatt hour goes down to .3. I mean, that's pretty attractive. And you'd almost say go for all five years. But understanding what the basis for production, which is why I want to understand that first.
Right. So, and Megan, feel free to jump in. In our RFP, we did not get real specific on whether they were looking at green energy production versus just their standard production module. Megan, do you have any more insight on that question from Council Stevens?
And so kind of sort of, so Reliant is part of the NRG company, much larger, of course, group. And so they actually utilize a lot of different sources, coal, natural gas, oil, nuclear power, and other sources. I think because they might have their hands in a bit more, they can provide us a better price if I'm understanding your question correctly. I may not be. The big thing we looked at, like Eric said, Rick, was more along the lines of the price and the customer service. We didn't ask, we did ask if they would be able to sustain and be sustainable, and they answered yes to that question. They do a competitive pricing. I'm trying to, not just with us, but where they receive their renewable energy sources.
So Megan and Eric, let's assume we want for five years because that's the most attractive from our pricing standpoint. What if their service goes in the wrong direction? Are there sufficient ways that we can terminate the contract based upon service performance, or once it's locked in, it's locked in regardless of service?
Yes.
So that, yeah, that was a piece that we added in because of our experience with TXU. So Megan, you can expand on that a little bit more, and maybe talk about some of the challenges you had with TXU.
So, and to answer your question on that, Rick, yes, we made sure that as part of the contract, there was options to get out as well as kind of a, let's work together to come to an agreement. Our biggest concern really hasn't been about the pricing. I mean, no, even though we only had the two companies provide an answer, across the board, electricity is fairly competitive. I mean, they try to run hand in hand with each other. Our biggest concern has been the customer service side. We've had TXU for several years now. They could never provide us exactly what we'd asked for, despite continuously asking them. Our big issue is the time it takes us to actually pay an invoice. Would ask for a departmental, provided them the departmental breakdown, including all of the ESIs that fell into each of the departments, and they could never provide it. So we break down 120-plus accounts every month. And it does take us some time. We do have an internal spreadsheet. My most recent issue is I repeatedly asked for assistance on a poll that we have. It's the city's federal warning system. It's the one located by the Sage store that's no longer in business. We're not paying for it right now. I reached out and tried to get it switched back to the city's name. It's a pretty big deal in my book. I mean, if someone cuts the service, that's a system right there that's not going to work. So as long as someone's paying for it, we're okay. But that's not the point. I don't know what to do to get that switched back over, and I've asked. I've provided them all the information we have on hand, and I don't get a response. After our original customer service representative left, I didn't know who to reach out to. I'm glad we didn't have as many issues, but they weren't very forthcoming with helping. When you look at the proposal by Reliant, they focus specifically on the customer service and the ability to do a lot of it online so that we don't have to wait around for someone. TXU does have the online availability, and it's kind of funny, though, that this is the first that's actually been presented to us. It was mentioned. We reached out a couple of times, but we never really got an answer. And I know that they go through employees just like any other company. But I mean, we are kind of a big, big user in a small area.
So, so I would like, based upon that, I'd like to amend the motion that the contract be for five years.
I'll second.
Second on it.
Yep. Council Curry's second. Okay, I thought it sounded like maiden.
We're close.
Okay, I've been demanded, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on this? Okay, my question is, so we can withdraw at any given time without penalties? Whether it be a three-year contract, five-year contract? I think we're talking about five years. So we can withdraw at any given time?
If they're not meeting the service requirements.
For lack of performance.
For lack of performance. So if we had, let's say, somebody else with a better deal, we have to stay within, otherwise we penalize.
Correct.
Yep.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
Even though we go with five years, Andy, we always have the ability to negotiate. I mean, if something does come up, Reliant may come back to us, but at the same time, we can go to Reliant. We may have to pay a penalty at that point, but if the long-term savings, I mean, you're just looking at your return of investment on it. So I mean, we do have that option. Hopefully, we won't have to use it.
Okay, good. Okay, any more discussion? So we have an amendment to the original motion. And let's vote on that first, okay? So all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, long sign.
Five up.
Okay, I saw unanimous. Okay, so motion carries. Now, let's get back to the original motion, which is to go with Reliant. Okay, so I'll call for the question on that. All those in favor of going with Reliant, raise your right hand.
Five.
Five. Okay, it's unanimous. So, motion carries. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to item number three, city manager.
Item three is to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on city attorney Rod Potten's bill, that updated bill, the new bill was included in your package.
Entertained a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the September and October city attorney's bill at $10,435 in lieu of the $11,935 that he proposed on the basis that there was $540 worth of expenses in September and another $960 worth of expenses in the October bill that should not be charged to the city.
I'll second. I'll second.
Create seconded. Discussion.
I just pointed a question to that quite quick, just to make it short. If not much work is being produced, taxpayer is up with his bills. And I'll say a famous quote by the city attorney, you've been paid enough? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I'll just, my discussion and rationale, you know, council recalls that the last city council, we disapproved the September bill. I went back and looked at in detail. There are certainly a lot and majority of legitimate charges for work that the attorney provided for the city. But I do believe there are a number of cases, as it amounted to $1,500 out of the $11,935 that were not appropriate. And my view is it's fair, and it resolves this bill with the city attorney.
Any more questions or discussion on it? Okay, see none. Let's go ahead and load on it. Almost in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
Five hands up.
Five left hands up. Okay, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Let's go with item number four. And Council Stevens.
So, thank you, Mayor. I move that the city of Alpine approve a resolution 2020-11-13 relative to the Alpine Country Club request that has a number of key elements in it. That the city council continue the monthly discount of 60% for water being provided to the Alpine Country Club, which we have already have in place. That we authorize the city manager to provide water from the affluent tank at no cost to the City Alpine Country Club for using the golf course. The objective of the city will be to provide affluent water 20 more days per month. That the Alpine Country Club continue to invest in projects identified in their capital plan and report progress to the city council not later than March of 2021. That this amendment, or this resolution, I'm sorry, take a place effective July 1, 2020, which was the expiration of the old agreement, and go through September 30, 2021. And that the Alpine Country Club work with the city to establish a cost to build the irrigation system on the course property, the cost estimate to be completed by March of this next year. That's the motion.
That's the motion. Okay.
I'll second.
So, you know, I went through a lot of the details of the resolution. You know, Eric Zimmer, Scott Perry, Johnny, myself, and others from the city met with the chair of the Country Club Board. As I shared, what happened as part of the information discussion at the last meeting, it was a really productive meeting because I think for the first time, we're getting a much better understanding of the, what the country club's doing from a water needs standpoint. And there's really a terrific dialogue which resulted in this resolution. So I think it puts us on a good path to continue then to be able to get water that they need at the right discount. Because remember, they're watering most of our property. But frankly, one of the most important elements, in my opinion, is to get them to go pursue a cost estimate to build out the irrigation system for the golf course such that all of the fairways can be watered with affluent water. Because that is not, they can't do that today. And so for them to be able to go do that, it then provides an opportunity for the city to be able to pursue grant funding that, in essence, improves our property that the golf course uses so that affluent property can be used, using one of my favorite terms, OPM, other people's money. And this is the first time they've really been willing to go work that commitment. So they're off working that now. And it continues the business relationship that we have with them. So I think it's the right thing to go do. And I think, Eric, if you want to add to the discussion from meeting.
Yeah, I think we assembled a week and a half ago at the Country Club, and we've been working with them, primarily our wastewater team on pushing affluent back. But we met with them and really got into the nitty-gritty, more on water usage out there, and understanding how their current sprinkler system is functioning, how they're drawing water, not only from our city public water supply, but the well that's on the corner of Fighting Buck and Brown, and then also the affluent water. And really, I think that the work that Patricia and her husband Andy are doing out there have made monumental improvement for the golf course. And that next step now is how do we help them resolve that irrigation system? Because long term, what then that creates is this ecosystem out there where water, treated water, like, you know, or potable water, that consumption can go down, increase the affluent usage, and overall be more water-conscious as a community, but still have the vibrancy out there of the green grass on the golf course. So very productive session. We did bring in Adelina Bell, our environmental services team as well, because as you all know, and she presented in her last presentation, she's working on that water plan out there with Cochrane Lodge. And so all of these factors need to work together. I think we've got really a good partnership team at the Country Club now established with their board, and this certainly makes sense. We as a city, and I would tell you as a city manager, we don't want to run a golf course. We really don't. We want to focus on streets. We want to focus on our water supply. We want to focus on our policing in the community. We've got a board out there that enjoys running that golf course, and I think the little bit that we do to help them support that endeavor is important.
Better one.
So at this point, we don't know. They're getting a cost estimate. The plan would be then, with support from the city, to pursue a grant to get that funded.
From that fine will be paid.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, but without a proposal, there's no way to go after a grant.
Similar to what we saw like with Mr. Perkins at the USDA. There's some grant dollars there, also through Texas Parks and Wildlife and some of the other foundations out there. So, but once, as Council Stevens stated, and this is the conclusion we came to in our meeting, unless we have a hard number that we say, hey, we need, you know, is it $125,000 to rebuild the irrigation system? Is it 85? Is it 150? Whatever that hard number is, and that's that, that criteria of having that developed by March of this next year. And then we can go start working with them on simulation of grants.
Yep. Good idea.
Yep.
All ready? Any more questions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
You have five up.
It's a baddies. How about that?
The baddies is there, yep.
Okay, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And I think the golf course will be plenty happy. Okay, we'll have city council comments and answers, and I'm going to start on my right-hand side. Since you're the new one here.
I would just like to thank the people in Ward Two for supporting my desire to be on the city council. And I now to try to work hard, and we are, and I say.
Thank you.
I'm just learning. I'm starting to learn.
Council Stevens.
Sir, I'd like to re-echo the comments earlier, thanking Ramon and Lucy for their time and service in council for the last four years. And I'd also like to welcome the new council members on board. As you've seen already, we may not always agree, but As you've seen already, we may not always agree, but the good thing is we can have the discussion. So it's great to have the discussion, dialogue, and all that we can do to help get you on board, you know, we ought to be, you know, doing that. So welcome aboard, thanks for serving.
Very good.
I want to welcome the new council members and thank you both for taking part in tonight's discussions.
Okay, thank you all very much. I'd like to welcome the new council members. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Betty. The pipe won't betty.
Oh, you forgot about me. Well, we're having a, this was a nice discussion, and everybody have a nice weekend.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, I'd like to thank Councilman Ramon Livas and council member Lucy Esquiel for their service here at city council. They did a fantastic job and I'm sure they're in the loop and continue to service our community. I'd also like to welcome our new two new members, Chris Ramon Livas and Martine Sarabich, to the council. And two years on each one of you. And like Councilman Stevens says, we may not always agree, but when we leave here, it's in the loop. Okay? So with that said, thank you all very much. And I wish to tell everybody, have a Thanksgiving.
That's right, that's very good, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I propose that we move into executive session.
Okay, you want to move right away, you want to take a break, or?
I'm sorry?
I'm fine.
I'm okay with moving right into executive session.
Yeah, I think it's going to be quick. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, most have been late in seconds, so we go immediately to, we have to end the regular session before we go to executive session.
So I move.
I think we motion to move into executive session, so that will end.
So we don't have.
It ends, yeah. It ends the regular session because we're going to come out of executive session, back into the meeting. So we can't end it.
And what is the time?
It was 8:02.
8:02, so gosh, time went by. Okay, so the executive session.
So G O., you can move the council that are on the call into the break. There he goes. He's like clockwork. That guy is good.
He's got this one. He's got this one.